Hi, welcome. This is the Tillamook County Pioneers Podcast and today we are talking with Paul Fournier or Fournier?
Fournier, Fournier, however you want to say it.
Beautiful. We're going to be talking about his upcoming candidacy and maybe some of your background and experience. So why don't we start by, we can have you introduce yourself to the audience?
Well, my name is Paul Fournier. I am a 29-year resident of Tillamook County. Came here from the East Coast. I'm from Boston originally. Lived a bunch of other places, but went to school in New York City, lived in the Virgin Islands for a little bit. But I moved here in 1995 and almost immediately began being a volunteer for Neetards Oceanside Fire. So I've been in public safety and been a first responder since arriving here, pretty much right after arriving here. I've held different jobs during that time, construction jobs, I drove a produce truck, delivered produce all over the county. I've worked for the Headlight Herald as a stringer and then as an arts and entertainment editor. Became an EMT, did that as a volunteer firefighter, also worked for the ambulance and then joined the Sheriff's Office in 2001. Actually, in 2000, I was a reserve and then 2001, I took a position as a seasonal marine deputy, where I worked in Cape Kwanda as my primary patrol area. And then moved up the ranks, worked in Garibaldi as a patrol officer, patrol deputy and was a marine deputy again, then I was a canine officer and became detective and I should, most of my time was served as a detective on the SWAT team, major crimes detective, narcotics, child abuse, homicides, any kind of big cases, we would handle that. Let me see, during that time, I also was a freelance writer. But I retired in 2018 from the Sheriff's Office, early retirement. I started my own business doing content creation. You can see I have a little voiceover studio behind me there. I did some real estate photos, content during COVID for the health department. Anyway, after retiring, Josh Brown got elected and asked me to come back to work. I didn't want to be a patrol officer anymore, so I agreed to come back and work part-time as a public information officer. So pretty much it, I was married, I'm divorced, I raised two kids in the Tillamook School District. Here, they're adults now. Anyway, that's about it. There's a lot more in there, but.
Yeah, no, that was a really great summary. What an interesting career. So why don't you talk about your inspiration for wanting to run for an elected office? Why you chose this position and how you feel you are going to best serve the community if you win?
Sure. Well, I mean, having more than half my life in public service, I felt like I still had some more to give and I didn't want to do it as a first responder. I have a piece of property in Neetarts, I own a house in Neetarts and then I have a piece of property that I've been wanting to develop. And I just ran into some, I just had some concerns with my property rights and how I could, what I could do with that property and things were changing so quickly and I felt like maybe the commissioners weren't really staying in touch with regular people. I think I'm not a politician, I've never been a politician, I've been a worker my whole career. So I felt like there was some voices weren't being represented, mine included. So I decided, I just, I thought the county needed to do more to prepare us for the future, our infrastructure. I live on a secondary street and anybody that lives on a secondary road, county road in Tillamook County understands what I mean when you're dodging potholes every day. And I don't think this is the blame of necessarily public works, I think they do a great job. I think that leadership comes from the top down and I feel like some of the priorities of the commission in the last few years has not been the priorities of most people I've talked to. So I felt like there was a new voice, a new perspective needed, somebody with creative ideas and how to bring more revenue in. We've been relying on timber revenues for so long and they've been decreasing throughout, for the last 20 years. They were reporting, they always say that they've been averaging about $4.5 million. So they act like they've been stable with fluctuations up and down, but the problem with the 4.5 million, I've said this many times. So I try not to say the same thing in every interview, but some of the things you just told true is that it's been 4.5 million average for the last 15 years. And that's using the county's graph, I should have grabbed it, I have it here. And it looks like a straight line with some zigs, but really it's not adjusted for inflation. And so it's literally been decreasing that whole time because 4.5 million, the buying power of 4.5 million today was about 6.8 million back in 2009, 15 years ago. So and we've, yep, we've been boom and bust and nothing's been done in the time that I've been here. I've been a county employee for 23 years. I was a union, a member of the Teamsters Union, I participated in three negotiations. During that time, it's been the same thing, we've been broke, we're always broke, we're going to be broke, but yet there's no answers. And I think there are answers, there's definitely some opportunities to bring more revenue into the county and help with housing. I mean, obviously the housing issue is a huge one for me, affordable childcare and needed childcare is needed by every industry here, all the working families could use help with that. So there's a lot of commonalities and the problems that we're facing. I do see now that there's been some more movement towards the whole revenue since my campaign started in August, because I started back at the fair. I was the first person to even start campaigning before I was even filed, before filing was open. And I've been saying the same thing all along, I haven't really altered my message. But it's interesting to hear some of the messages, messaging and the narrative changing even at the county commission level now. I went through the interim process when Commissioner Yamamoto announced his retirement. I put in for that, I made it to the, I made it into the top six. And some people that are on the county commission, I didn't think I was qualified enough. So I had planned on running the whole time and so the ideas about raising revenue and finding new revenue sources wasn't being talked about much. In fact, it was basically, they were saying, oh, it's not available, there isn't more money, we're doing everything we can. And I just don't believe that. Housing alone, the governors sending out hundreds of millions of dollars to other counties and jurisdictions and other areas. And I think we need to get more, more of that. Anyways, sorry, I can ramble a lot about that.
No, that's great. I think that's probably what people want to hear the most, your ideas specifically about how you plan on raising that revenue. And I think touching a little bit about your qualifications, it sounds like you have a lot of experience with public service in general. But how do you see those skills translating to a commissioner position? And specifically with raising revenue?
Sure. I think it's interesting, going through this process, I've noticed some candidates or some incumbents and some commissioners, they focus on things that they believe are important that make them qualified to be, to be county commissioners. All you need to be qualified to be a county commissioner is be a resident of Tillamook County, be over 18 years old. So I mean, the reality is, is all those jobs, all those careers, I had the same career for 20 years, I didn't know how to be detective until I became a detective, till I received training. I mean, there's going to be a learning curve, a slight learning curve. My skill set is I have a creative brain, I'm somewhat intelligent and I can problem solve. I'm a big collaborator. You don't have to be the smartest person in the room and I'm certainly not. But it's good to know when you can recognize who is and you reach out to that person for assistance. I think that I have the ability to build bridges and partner with people. I'm a collaborator in everything I do in my hobbies, I'm a collaborator. In my, when I was filmmaking, it's a collaboration. Everything I've done that has value has been a collaboration. I feel like that's what this is and maybe that's what's missing. I think, you know, people that are in politics for years start to get a certain mindset about things and thinking a certain way. And I think it's important every once in a while to have somebody new come in who has, who has not been biased or beaten down or you know, gives up easy and says, oh, takes no for an answer. I think there's always a way to find, to find a way to yes. I just may not have all the answers. So I think I've made partnerships, sorry, I might continue with that. I've made friendships and partnerships throughout the county during all of my careers here. I've been successful and just for everything I've tried to accomplish. I'm not, it's not a bragging, it's the fact that again, I know how to find mentors and reach out for help when I need it. So I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's, it's a good start. I would, I would wonder, do you plan on focusing more on, you mentioned getting more money for housing from the governor. And I'm curious where you might, where you might find that funding? Which department and is it a grant that you're expecting to go for? Or are you looking to increase the allocation from the state directly to the county? Or is it an increase in taxes or some combination thereof? What's the?
I think it is going to be a patchwork solution to bring more revenue, absolutely not new taxes, I will not advocate for new taxes. I don't even like the idea of some levies and some bonds scare me sometimes. I think people are hurting, I mean, the, you know, first of all, the money from the governor is her housing initiative, she just released $300 million and there's counties that are getting money for infrastructure. We need to improve our wastewater treatment and water treatment to be able to even expand into some of the areas of Tillamook County. So that's a focus, that infrastructure, yeah, we're going to need grants or money from the state to do that. And I mean, we have a representative and a senator, state senator and a state rep that are both from here. And I've spoken with Representative Javady and he understands that it's a necessity for us to get some of that money. And the Lincoln County's got some, Manzanita actually got a little bit of money for one of their projects. So there is money available specifically for, to upgrade infrastructure, we need to grab that. So that's one component. So it is a patchwork, that's one component. Second component is they can raise a TLT percentage and they're looking at doing that finally now. I've been saying that for months and we're finally having that discussion. There is a new budget committee. This, this, this time around, we have three new volunteer members from the community and I think they're wonderful addition. And they're really about collaborating and working and finding solutions and finding, and they're actually speaking about finding revenue where in the past few years, everything's been about cutting, cutting services, cutting positions. So I think, so part of it would be TLT money, that's about, if they raise the 2%, it's about $2 million right there that would help get us out of the current hole that we're in. I would be, a big part of it is the visitor economy is our number one growing economy. We have hundreds of millions of dollars drive through Tillamook every year and they're spent in neighboring counties. People confuse grabbing more of that money with expanding tourism or inviting more people here. It's more about grabbing the people that are already here, grabbing some of that money and keeping it in Tillamook County. I would, I would expand the parks and I would bring them into, back into the, into the general fund. Parks Department, other departments, public works have been moved out of the general fund because it's easy to access. That's the kind of money, the money in the general fund is what the commissioners can use for other projects because they can't touch special revenue. So pushing these departments out sometimes is a good solution and other times they're pushed out and kind of left on their own. The Parks Department, you know, with our yurts and camping grounds, we can expand and make them world-class parks and bringing a lot of revenue. Parking areas for visitors. The parking lot in Pacific City alone without much enforcement made over $300,000 last year. So there's money there to be tapped in, again, it's not the only solution. But expanding the parks is a big one for me to bring more money into, but bringing them back into the general fund so that can help feed it. We need, there are grants available for a lot of infrastructure stuff like road repairs and stuff like that, I know. And using more tourist amenity money, you really can't, I'm not going after the 70, 30, I'm not, I think we missed the boat. Years ago, we should have had, Tillamook County should have had their own tourism tax and they did not choose to do that. So also by encouraging housing, workforce housing, we need it desperately. By encouraging and helping to facilitate and incentivize building of more workforce and affordable housing is going to give us more taxpayers. It's going to build our tax base, which gives us more assessed value. So we get money from that. So it's not more taxes or new taxes, it's new taxpayers. And I think, I think that's another part. Again, these are all pieces, there's not one answer, there's not an easy answer. But we have to do all these things at once. It's not a this or that, it's a this and that situation.
How about, so those are all great ideas. What about building, rebuilding some of Tillamook County's industry? So yes, forestry is something that's, that's so highly regulated and it's such a long return cycle. And so while it creates jobs, the money isn't necessarily the most reliable. But there are so many other industries that we could be seeking and I rarely hear commissioners talk about that. Could you talk about how you would work with private businesses to encourage businesses to relocate in Tillamook and bring jobs and opportunities?
I'm not quite sure what kind of industry you, you're speaking of, but I can maybe.
High tech would be a great one. I mean, we have a lot of industrial land that could be developed and we could have manufacturing. We could have a computer chip development. There's so many things we can do with the land we have, but no one's discussing it.
Well, part of that problem is a lot of high tech requires a lot of electricity that we may or may not have enough of yet. Also, everything you're saying requires housing. We have, we have no places now for teachers, firefighters, doctors, nurses to live right now. So the housing crisis is a big obstacle in promoting new industry coming here. When the railroad, when we lost the railroad, that was devastating. At that time, they didn't think it would, it would pay for itself. I think now we're realizing that even a passenger rail coming from Portland would be something that could help fund that. But the railroads are gone, so you have crumbling roads, only three roads going over the valley that can deliver goods that are created here. Now, that doesn't mean there's not answers. I think years ago, I'm sitting out at Tillamook, the port of Tillamook Bay right now, that's where my studio is and I'm here right now. And literally a couple hundred feet that way, a couple hundred yards that way, there used to be a trust company, wooden trusses and they were building trusses that were being shipped all over, all over the country to build houses. I use my garage as a Tillamook American Trust structure where they built the walls here in the trusses and they delivered it and they put it together in a day. These would be great solutions now if we had that kind of industry here. Engineered wood is another way of using trees that we have and lumber that we have in a way that we could use that here. So I'm look, there's options here where there's developers that are building on the coast, not just in Tillamook County. And they could use these kind of products. So I think they're going after those kind of industries that kind of tie in our, our legacy industries like lumber, like timber into some new, with new technologies. I mean, I didn't even know this, I have a friend who's a building inspector back east and he was telling me that they're using these engineered lumber for tall buildings now, they're finding that it's fire resistant and stronger than steel. So here we are, we have the timber. It's, it's, you don't need old growth timber for these kind of things, because they're glued and laminated together. So I think that finding a way of maybe encouraging incentivizing business like that to come down, because a business like that would help us build the houses that we need to house the people that we need to work there. So to me, that's what I'm saying, it's not one answer. Getting a business in here is one thing, manufacturing is difficult because you don't have, we have to use trucks. And we're seeing that problem with the dairy industry where the reason we have corn in the fields is just the price of corn and feed for the cows is so much because it has to be trucked in and not trained in. And so these things all had, all these decisions that happened years ago to not rebuild a railroad. Now the roads are getting beat up and Highway 6 just keeps sinking because it wasn't, it didn't have that much traffic before. And it's not mom and dad coming down in their car to visit the coast, it's heavy trucks that are driving the road. So I think that's an obstacle for bringing in traditional tech. Now, we should be, we should be promoting and supporting the food systems we have here, the fishing and farming that we do have. I think that's important, becoming more self-sustainable. I'm a big fan of that. And the funny thing is, is you can use some of that visitor money, people are coming down here, you know, they come to Garibaldi to see the fishing village, they come to the PC to see the dories, I mean, these things are important to visitors and they're important to our, to our local economy and local jobs and just their legacy. They're part of our legacy in our DNA. So I, I don't know if you, if there's a way to bring, I think the reason the commissioners or there's not a lot of talk about bringing all this new infrastructure companies in here, we don't have the housing for the people that we, for the jobs we have open right now. And I think we have to solve that problem.
And we do have the housing, it's just being used for second homes and vacation homes because tourism has been promoted over residents living in the county and working in the county. So if we converted some of the second homes to full-time rentals and encouraged people to rent out their homes to people who live and work here, we probably would solve a large percentage of the need for housing. But unfortunately, the cost of the, the return on that investment for your home is much greater for somebody with a second home than it is for somebody to rent it out to a full-time resident. But that's a larger macro issue.
Yeah, but I'd like to speak to that if I could, you know.
Yeah, please. Yeah.
Okay, so Tillamook County has always been a tourist destination since the beginning, since, since people started coming here, since Europeans started coming here. So there's always been the Bay Ocean, this has always been, it's the ocean, you know, we have 75 miles of the most beautiful coastline in the, in the country. People are going to come, you're always going to have tourists, you're not going to stop there. Now, I agree with, we don't need to promote tourism. And most DMOs, the destination manager, aren't actively promoting anymore, we are already full. The bigger problem with the short-term rentals that you're speaking of, Tillamook, when I moved here in 95 in Neetarts Oceanside, 40% of the homes were second homes. This isn't a new thing. What's new is the short-term rental industry, that didn't exist. These were beach homes that families would use and friends of families would use. And occasionally you could rent, but that whole concept of renting houses wasn't, didn't happen until Airbnb became a big thing. And so that has changed the face for sure, but we've always had a large number, especially anywhere near the ocean. You're going to have a large number of houses that are vacation rentals or second homes. Some communities like in Pacific City, the HMOs that are down in some of the communities were specifically designed to be short-term rentals. So I don't know how you go in there and tell them they can't do that anymore, or we're going to take your house and make it be, I think that's.
You could incentivize it. You could incentivize it by providing property tax discounts for people who rent to long-term renters. And you could increase property taxes on people who rent to, you know, VBRO and Airbnb. I mean, there's a million ways you can do anything.
You can't actually raise property tax, we can't raise property taxes.
You could advocate for it at the state level. So you could, you could advocate for it at the state level to lower property taxes for people who rent their homes to long-term renters. There are so many different.
Yeah, that doesn't help the revenue problems. If we reduce taxes, we don't, if we take money off the tax.
Well, it would if you increased the amount of businesses that were here. So I mean, that's the thing, if you're, if you're trying to build a tax base, building it on the backs of individuals who are teachers and firefighters, that's, that's only going to get you so far. You have to have business taxes. That's, that's where in, the Tillamook Creamery is one of Oregon's highest grossing businesses. And you know, having more businesses like that where it's not just something that benefits the local county, but it's something that actually brings in massive revenues to the, to the state would be incredible. We have near-space industry, which is a really innovative industry of bringing products to low earth orbit with, you know, they, they use parachutes essentially, fancy parachutes.
Right here, and I'm familiar with.
Yes, exactly. So, so those types of jobs.
How many employees do they have, do you know?
They have about 15, but it's, and it's, it's not just the number of employees, it's the revenue that they're bringing in. And they're bringing in revenue from outside the county. So it, yes, tourism absolutely matters. No, you shouldn't take away a person's right to do whatever they want with their property. But in that holistic picture, you obviously have to consider business, the business leg of that tripod is incredibly important for a county's stability. So it's one of the reasons why I asked. But you had mentioned the railroad not being repaired. And I remember both floods that took out the railroad that went up then to Halim. And I'm wondering if you were elected commissioner, how would you advocate for transportation? Would you focus on roads or would you be actually advocating to repair the railroad?
I don't, I think that based on people I spoke to, I think that opportunity has sailed. That we had the money fee, there was money for that and it was, it was decided not to do it. And maybe that was the right decision at the time. I absolutely will advocate for improving the roads. I would love to see a railroad back. I just don't know if that's even feasible. So I don't know if that's, if that's a battle. I haven't heard any of our representatives talking about that happening. So I don't know.
As I can tell, our representatives tend to just represent their own interests and not, as you mentioned, the interests of the people who actually live in the county. So in terms of your goals, let's say, let's flash forward to the election, you win and you are one of the new county commissioners. What would be your primary working platform? What would be the goals for the first year, first two years?
Well, just continue what I've been doing during the campaign is reaching out and speaking to people. I think that, I think I would make our meetings more accessible, putting them at a better time. I guess I would reach out to the public and say, what works for you? I like to see more public engagement to these meetings. These meetings are held during the day when most people have to work or taking care of children. And I think that during COVID also, they changed the meeting structure so that you can't comment about agenda items at the end of a meeting, you can only comment before the meeting. And that came, I think, from a lot of, you know, the disruption they were having during mask mandates and all that. So I think that doing things like that, having, not having the ability to speak about what was just spoken about, I think it really quells discourse and I don't think it's, it's a good idea. I, I believe in, again, transparency, getting things out. People, a lot of people are apathetic towards politics, they just are, they vote. If they vote, sometimes they vote and they just want you to go do their job, do the job, we're voting. But I think people, they want to be heard and I think it's important to share with them what we're doing. And maybe in a lot of times, before we decide to do something, we should be having more public involvement. So I think the first.
Gosh, what a concept. You mean, ask the people that elected you what they want you to do before you make a decision about how their money is spent?
I think, to go back to the short-term rental thing, back to the housing, I think we have to have some of these communities self-determining in that. People that live in that community should have, should have a big voice in what happens. And I agree the same thing. My ideas of getting more visitor money doesn't mean that the public's going to like it. So like, we're going to hold meetings and discuss some of these ideas and, and find a path forward. But I feel like that's the difference between being a politician and being a person who's not a politician in a politician's position. I can't imagine, first of all, I like a little bit of disagreement and a little bit of debate because it makes you, it challenges you to kind of try to find a better solution, a better way forward. I'm an, I'm an unaffiliated voter, I've been one for over a decade. I, I don't have an ideology that I'm following. I'm, I'm a common sense guy and I like to listen to both sides. As a police officer, I'm a trained listener. I mean, that's part, I actually put that in my Pioneer Questionnaire that I, you know, media, I spent my career mediating opposing forces, opposing sides. But that would be, I think that's a day one job is I would turn my Facebook into, into a commissioner Facebook and it would be something where I would have, I would welcome that interaction.
I recommend not doing that and starting a separate one because it's.
Well, not my personal one.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Because that belongs to the public and you might want to keep it.
Absolutely. And I think that's, that's the fear. I mean, I've been doing that for the sheriff's office, I'm the public information officer, sheriff's office, I understand public record and all that stuff. But I really believe that there's a lot of stuff that happens and they do it during a public meeting and they notice it in the paper, but a lot of people don't know about it because they're busy with their lives. It's not because they're apathetic and they don't care, it's that they just don't have the time. And so how do we as, as the government make it easy? And I think, I think that's a big part of it is, is it's not that hard to get the word out. I mean, you know this as well as I do, you go, Tillamook County uses Facebook like no other place probably in the country. It is our CNN or our Fox News, it is, it is. And so you post, you post something in a couple of community groups, it gets to a lot of people and then they tell people and they tell, so it's not hard to get, you know, to get the word out of what the commission's planning on doing. I think there's been a hesitancy for public feedback and, and it's maybe warranted because sometimes people can't be, can't contain themselves and have no decorum. But I feel like we have to find a path back to that. So that would be my first thing would be increased transparency, increased access and to the meetings. You know, I'm not going to go in there with a steamroller and change a bunch of things, but I've already spoken to some commissioner, current commissioners and I've spoken to the chief of staff and we've talked about these meeting things. And I, I think there's a, there's a desire to, to make some of those changes. To make the public feel like.
To be fair, I'm going to, I'm going to advocate on behalf of the rabble-rousers of these public meetings. And I would say they absolutely do have decorum and they can contain themselves, they choose not to because they're very. They choose not to because they're very angry, and I think that having lived in Tillamook County for twenty years and before that, I was a visitor. My first trip to the ocean was there, um, I lived in Oceanside and Manzanita and the Halum and. In terms of seeing how the local government. Has missed opportunity after opportunity to pursue their own personal interests and pet projects has been deeply frustrating. So I think a lot of people are silent and they don't go to meetings because they feel there isn't really anything they can do. And until they get angry enough, I mean, if somebody has to be next level angry to attend one of these meetings. And then they get silenced, or as you said, the um opportunity to comment on an agenda item gets moved to the beginning of the meeting. So it's kind of pointless because there's nothing that you can do to um actually engage with the process. So I wouldn't say it's that that's lack of decorum, I think a lot of people in Tillamook have a lot of decorum and you can see that in the. Level of patience they've exercised with the existing government that they have, for instance, um, the the FEMA money, for instance. Um, some of that FEMA money was personally spent on a commissioner's personal farm fence. That that's not the appropriate way to spend federal public disaster money. And that there are, uh, you know, I could give you a list of examples of um things that have happened within the county that are. Extremely unscrupulous, so but in the terms of moving past that, um. Not, you know, trying to silence anybody who maybe gets angry at a public meeting, but w- what do you see as? Um, the biggest, if you could accomplish just one thing, what's the, besides uh, you know, increasing transparency? Because that's, you know, that's kind of a vague thing, yes, everybody wants more transparency in government. But what's one concrete way that you could improve Tillamook County and the lives of the residents here if you were elected as commissioner?
Okay, well, um, I'd like to go back to a couple of those things, because you bring up interesting, interesting points, one, I think you have to change the culture that we have, which is a culture of. Um, of not listening, of commissioners not listening. Um, I'm as a, as a representative employee who who negotiated three contracts, I can tell you, I've experienced that firsthand. I've experienced firsthand when public officials, uh, elected officials give themselves a raise. While trying to negotiate the least amount of money they can for their workers.
Never happens.
And I will tell, like, I publicly said this and I'm in a meeting and I've been endorsed by 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 the union I worked for, uh, local uh members. But I I will say this publicly, I think that uh we need to pay our people not as much, as little as we can get away with, but rather as much as we can afford. And I think it's really sketchy when elected officials are giving themselves raises or or admin is getting raises before the people are, I know very. So that, I'm getting off track here, but I wanna say is change the culture, changing the culture of the place. Of the, of the system or or of the, at least that board, okay, we're talking about that one board, changing the culture of that, um. Is, I think, step one, I think the thing that concerns me is that you said people have to get angry enough to just participate. And then when they get there, they get shut down, and my question is, why, why is that the, why is that the route? That's available, now, I guess, if maybe it's the culture of the B O C C in the past, that they didn't feel like their voices were being heard. But I think one thing I've learned in twenty years of law enforcement is yelling and coming in, and I'm not saying that you. Go to, uh, people shouldn't come in and be upset, I guess what I'm saying is, how, and you, maybe you can answer this, how do we? And I think it's changing the culture, how do we get to the point where people don't feel like that is the next possible step? Instead of doing that, do we have a conversation first? And I think why, why aren't we having the conversation, maybe figuring out why, why we have to get angry at our local government, and I'm, I'm not. I'm one of those people, okay, I've been very upset with some of the land use stuff, property rights stuff, I don't agree with a lot of things, which is why I'm running, so. But I also know that nothing gets accomplished when someone just wants to come in and they're instantly angry at you and and there's no. Possibility of a discourse, of a, of a meaningful discourse, I mean, some people will never change their mind about something. Um, others, folks, I like to consider myself to be a curious person, that I really wanna know the facts, um. That was my job, I had to figure out a situation walking into it, I'm doing that as a, as a candidate, I'm asking people. From every side of the, uh, e- every, from every walk of life, every political ideology, trying to figure out. Where's our common ground, because I really don't wanna have meetings where people are just yelling at each other, because nothing gets accomplished, you can't hear somebody when you're yelling. So that stops that, and I'm sorry, my phone is ringing, I'm using my phone.
Um, well, we actually, we have about two minutes on this meeting, so why don't we let uh, give you the platform so that you can. Uh, leave the audience with some kind of conclusion and uh also remind them when to vote.
Okay, yeah, well, May twenty-first is is a vote, voting day, but you'll be getting your ballot, I think mailed out next week, so um, I I am in the voters pamphlet, you can read. Um, my position, I am only running against, I have one opponent, I'm not running against Aaron Starr, Jeff Spink. Or Bruce Loveland, I have one opponent and. So you can check out the voters him handbook or pamphlet and you can get more information at voteforpaul2024.com, I have my resume up there, um. I guess I'll leave you with this, I would love to figure out a way that the culture is shifted enough so that we don't have to have people. Like you, who feel like your voice isn't being heard and you have to get angry, get in there and get, I'd rather, let's come together before that. And that's why I think it's time to elect somebody who's not a politician, not a career politician, I'm, I have, uh. I'm new to this, it's gonna be a learning curve for me, um, but I listen and I'm in, I'm gonna continue getting out to where people are at. Because I know they're working, I know they can't to come necessarily come to a meeting, so I think it's very important to meet people where they're at, that's what I've been doing during the campaign. I've been doing it since August and I don't, I don't see myself changing that, so I'm available, people can reach out to me on Facebook or on my, on my website. And I'll be happy to give them a call back if they wanna leave their number.
Thank you, um, this has been the Tillamook County Pioneers Podcast Series and thank you so much, Paul, for this opportunity to get to know you. It was a really interesting conversation and I feel like I learned a lot. Um, you can find us at tillamookcountypioneer.net and please let us know if you have any feedback or comments or questions for the candidates and we'll make sure to pass those along. Thank you so much.
Thanks again.